I'd like to call this special meeting for general purposes and to adopt the preliminary budget to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our head, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call Mrs. Or.
Mr. Casey.
Mr. Dunne.
Present.
Mr. Dwyer.
Present.
Mr. Duffey.
Present.
Mr. Martinelli.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Present.
Mrs. Lewski.
Present.
Director Robinson.
Here. Visiting delegations, Mr. Kevin Case.
Excuse me, Director. I'm here today as representative of the Scranton Federation of Teachers. And in defense of what the actual cost of teacher salaries and benefits have been over the several years, recent reports in the paper may have been misconstrued by some to suggest that the major cause of the $10 million deficit that you now face with is the result of teacher contracts or other labor force contracts. So in defense of Scranton Federation of Teachers, I ask you, directors, please to take a look at the numbers that I've compiled here. Beginning with 2010 and 2011, the salaries for professionals, for teachers and nurses, et cetera, totaled $42,648, $647. That, you know, a few years ago, started that number because it was rather high that year. It was the year right before about 70 of our teachers retired, top end, most of them, top end teachers retired. And I also picked that number because if you look at the last, the next couple of pages, it shows your audit for those two years, beginning in 2010 and 2011, showing a fund balance at the end of both of those years of in excess of $1 million. $1 million, you're on your $1,009, $1.9 million over the year. So it wasn't a year that, even though our salaries were in the higher range, it wasn't a year that broke the bank, so to speak, for the Scranton School District. And then if you take a look at the following years, 2011 and '12, again, this is after a number of our top end teachers have retired, the cost to the district for our salaries went to $38 million. So it's a saving of $4 million from the previous year, using the previous year as the standard, so to speak, for my discussion of this. And then in 2013, it was at $39 million, again, another savings compared to 2011, of $3,291,000. 2013, '14, we were at $40 million, still less than the year 2010, '11, by $1,800,000. So for those three years, following 2011, the savings to the district, if we use, again, you know, there with me, if we use 2010, '11 as the standard, saved the district $9,700,000. The projected salary expenditure for this coming year with the new contract, with the numbers that we had at the time, moving everybody forward on step and everyone getting a 1.7 percent increase, comes to $43,926,000. This is an increase of $1.2 million compared to 2010, '11. So looking at those four years following 2010, '11, if you subtract the $9 million, from the $9 million savings, the 1.2 million dollar increase, we have savings of $8.4 million. Now, we do have additional staff that were hired. In order to staff the two new schools mainly, both Camelot and Monticello, we, you know, with 30 additional teachers, there are 30 additional from prior year, we're looking at worst case scenario, and I'm sure they're not all at $40,000. If they were all at $40,000, these additional teachers, it would cost $1.2 million. Still, subtracting that from the savings, we're at a savings of $7.2 million over this five-year period, you know, over this four-year period. And if you want to check our numbers, these are numbers that were presented to the fact finder for the last year. For this particular contract, it wasn't disputed. You know, we could argue numbers. If there is a difference, it can't be by much. Okay. So I hope you would all agree that it's not the Scranton Federation of Teachers and it's not our bargaining unit that's causing this increase, this huge increase, and this huge deficit that we face with now. Now, contrast that with the next section, the lower half of here, up through the first page. When we look at transportation contracts, you've seen this before, I won't spend a lot of time on it, you're all familiar with it, I'm sure. Two PA State Auditor Generals, Jack Wagner and Eugene DiFuscoli, reported excesses of 303 percent over the PA State Formula for buses, totaling $7,257,000 over a four-year period. That period was years 2006 through 2010. I'm sure we have not had any decrease or any savings on those contracts. As a matter of fact, from what I understand, there's a 3 or 4 percent increase each year. And now, the Scranton Times, an article dated November 4th of this year, reports there's going to be a $1.5 million increase in transportation costs. This is $1.5 million on top of what is probably 3 to 4 times the state formula for buses. So if we're looking at, you know, where the increases are coming from, please, when you're talking with people, if your administrators are talking to the PTA, if you are talking with parents, please don't put the blame on teachers for the increased costs that you're having. Please don't put the blame on teachers for this $10 million deficit. I thank you for your attention. If you have any questions, I'm always available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Case.
Thank you, Kevin.
Athletics and Stadium, Director Martinelli.
Yes, Madam President. It is a recommendation of Athletics and Stadium Committee that the following be appointed to coaching positions as indicated for the 2014-2015 school year, salaries in accordance with collective borrowing agreements. West Scranton High School freshman boys basketball coach, Michael Fatsi. Assistant wrestling coach, Robert Berice. Scranton High School Assistant varsity wrestling coach, John Burgett. South Scranton Intermediate School Boys Basketball Coach, James Chikol. I saw move.
On the question, hearing nothing, roll call Mrs. Or.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Duffey.
Yes.
Mr. Martinelli.
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Lewski.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Lewski.
Thank you, Mr. Martinelli. Budget and Finance, Director Dunne.
To the members of the Board of Directors of the City of Scranton, the Budget and Finance Committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas the public school code of 1949, as amended, requires the formation and approval of the preliminary budget. And whereas the obligation for the approval of the above is placed upon the school board based upon information in exchange between the information, pardon, exchange between the administration and the school board. And whereas the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton is hereby in position to carry out its legal obligation, now therefore be it resolved that the preliminary budget as attached for the year 2015 is hereby introduced for consideration by the Scranton School Board in order that same or any amendments that are due may be approved in accordance with law. Be it further resolved that copies of the preliminary budget as adopted be made available for public inspection through the Office of the Secretary of the School Board and the Board of School Directors. Said officer shall advertise the action hereby taken in accordance with law and be subject to the approval of all documentation by the district solicitor. Respectfully submitted.
On the question.
On the question, I just want to put out there, every year, that this is a preliminary budget and it's not determined and we have a whole month to work the bugs out of this and go over the wish list and get down to work a budget that is realistic. So I just want the public to know that and that this is not the real thing until we vote on the final portion of it.
Thank you, Director Sheridan. Anyone else? Hearing nothing, roll call Mrs. Or.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Duffey.
Yes.
Mr. Martinelli.
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders.
Yes.
Mrs. Lewski.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
So the members of the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton, the Budget and Finance Committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas there will be a capital burden deficit in the beginning of the 2015 year, and whereas it is necessary to borrow funds to meet said deficit in the first part of 2015 until revenues are generated, and whereas it is the desire of the Board to borrow said funds through the use of a series tax revenue anticipation note, and whereas it is desire of the Board of Directors to seek bids from local lending institutions for the tax anticipation note for the 2015 year. Now therefore be it ratified and resolved. The Deputy Superintendent of Finance of the Scranton School District along with the School District's Financial Advisor, Case Con, has authorized to advertise for bids from local lending institutions in the Scranton area for the tax revenue anticipation notes for the 2015 year. Respectfully submitted.
On the question, hearing nothing, roll call Mrs. Or.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Burgett.
Yes.
Mr. Martinelli.
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lewski.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
The members of the Board of Directors of the City of Scranton, a resolution of the Board, School Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton, by one accounting Pennsylvania, setting forth is incented to issue a series of general obligation notes to be designated as general obligation notes, series of 2014, of the school district and an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $32 million pursuant to the act of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as amended, reenacted, and supplemented, known as the Local Government Unit Debt Act, finding that a private sale by negotiation is in the best financial interest of the school district, determining that such notes shall evidence an electoral debt of the school district, specifying that such indebtedness is to be incurred to provide funds to finance a project of the school district which consists of, among other things, currently refunding the school district's outstanding general obligation bond, Series E of 2011, and two, paying the cost and expenses of issuing the notes, setting forth a reasonable estimated useful lives of the projects to be refinanced by the notes, accepting a proposal for the purchase of such notes at private sale by negotiation, providing that such notes, when issued, shall constitute a general obligation to the school district, fixing the de-annuation, date-to-date, interest payment, interest rates, redemption provisions, and place of payment of the principal of an interest on such notes, authorize specified officers of the school district to contract with the paying agent for its services in connection with the notes, setting forth the substantial form of the notes evidencing the debt, authorizing execution and attestation of such notes, providing covenants related to debt service applicable to such notes to the extent required by the Act, pledging full faith, credit, and taxing power from the school district and support thereof, creating a sinking fund in connection with such notes to the extent required by the Act, designating the paying agent to be the sinking fund depository, providing a covenant to ensure prompt and full payment for such notes when due, setting forth registration and transfer provisions with respect to such notes, authorizing the execution of one or more investment agreements by specified officers of the school district if applicable, and purchase of certain U.S. Treasury obligations or any other securities or investments in connection with the investment proceeds of such notes, authorizing and directing specified officers of the school district to do, to take, and to perform certain specified and required, if necessary, or appropriate acts to effect the issuance of the notes, including without limitation, the preparation of a debt statement and borrowing base certificate, and the filing of specified documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, all as required by the Act, declaring that the debt should be evidenced by such notes together with all other indebtedness of the school district will not be in excess of any applicable limitation imposed by the Act, authorizing proper officers of the school district to deliver the notes upon the approval of the Department of Community and Economic Development, setting forth covenants precluding to the school district from taking actions which would cause the notes to become arbitrage bonds or private activity bonds as those terms are used in the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, the applicable regulations promulgated thereunder, approving an interest rate management plan, approving the form of amendment to existing interest rate management agreements released to the notes, approving the maximum fixed rate of interest payable by the school district under and in connection with the notes and the interest rate management agreement, and the minimum rate of the interest payable to the counterparty under the interest rate management agreement, approving the term of the interest rate management agreement, coven to make payments of the school district under and in connection with the notes, and the interest rate management agreement, authorizing the preparation of transcript or proceedings to be filled with the Department of Community and Economic Development in connection with the interest rate management agreement, authorizing the execution of a continuing disclosure certified and coven to comply with the provisions thereof, authorizing the preparation, use, and distribution of a preliminary official statement and an official statement by the purchaser in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, authorizing the execution and delivery of other necessary documents and taking out other necessary action in connection with the foregoing, providing a misresolution shall become effective, providing for severability of provisions and repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions insofar as the same shall be inconsistent herewith as per attached. Respectfully submitted.
On the question. Hearing nothing else? Roll call Mrs. Or.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Martinelli.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mrs. Lewski.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Dr. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Lewski.
Thank you, Mr. Dunne. Intergovernmental, Director Casey.
To the members of the Board of the School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is a recommendation of the Intergovernmental Committee that the following is approved. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors authorize the superintendent, business manager, solicitor, bond counsel, financial advisor, and other professionals associated with the public offerings to determine and make a recommendation of whether it is in the best interest of the school district to participate in MCDC initiative, and if so is determined, the district shall file a self-report by December 1st, as per tax. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
On the question, hearing nothing, roll call Mrs. Or.
Mr. Martinelli.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mrs. Lewski.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Duffey.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Lewski.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Personnel, Director Martinelli.
Yes, Madam President. Leaves of absence, member of the school board, the City of Scranton, is a recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the following be approved. Leaves of absence, Susan Mankus, grade one, Willard, sabbatical restoration of health with pay. Heather Jones, grade four, trip, family medical leave without pay. I saw move.
Second.
On the question, hearing nothing, roll call Mrs. Or.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Lewski.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Lewski.
Thank you, Mr. Dunne. Personnel, Director Martinelli.
Yes, Madam President. Leaves of absence, member of the school board, the City of Scranton, is a recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the individuals listed below be appointed to professional positions in the Scranton School District. Professional, speech therapist, Lindsay S. Whalen. Appointment is effective upon receipt of proper federal criminal records, immigration, medical, and child abuse reports. Assignment, substitute teaching assignment. Is a recommendation that the substitutes listed below be assigned to positions indicated at the established rate. Matthew Capp, cognitively special ed, Monticello, long-term sub. I saw move.
Second.
On the question, hearing nothing, roll call Mrs. Or.
Mr. Lewski.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Lewski.
Yes.
Mr. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Dr. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. Lewski.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Dunne.
Yes.
Mr. Duffey.
Yes.
Mr. Martinelli.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Yes.
Director Robinson.
Under President's report, honestly, I just would like to wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving next week.
Thank you, Madam President.
And I believe, Mr., sorry, I'm sorry. Under new business, I believe Director Dwyer has something he'd like to discuss.
Yes, well, there's actually a couple of items that I'd like to discuss. We had a wonderful moment last week when one of our young athletes signed a letter of intent to one of America's elite colleges that Jake McCarthy at Scranton signed his letter of intent for the University of Virginia. And it was done with a little fanfare, chocolate cake and pizza in the library at Scranton High School. Jake's parents and grandparents were present. All of his teammates and coaches were there as well. It was a really good day and it helps ground us to realize that our kids, our students, when given the opportunity, can flower, they can excel to the point where the rest of the world takes notice. It was a good day, really good day. And we're going to do something special going forward for Jake because he's just accomplished some remarkable statistics in his football career. But to his family and to his faculty and everybody at Scranton, just a congratulations on a great day. And this happens all the time in the district. You know, we've had so many great kids on so many levels at West and at Scranton do so many good things. And it was just one of the things that makes me really happy being a school director. It was a good day. Now, on a less harmonious note, I was troubled yesterday by a front page story in the Scranton Sunday Times concerning our nursing situation. And I was troubled because, and Kevin Case, Kevin Case uses the word misconstrued. I think the prefix "mis" applies a lot to the way the board and the district gets covered in our local print media. And I for one took some umbrage yesterday in an article that took four columns on the front page and six columns above the fold on page A10. We had one sentence mention the LPN corps of our certified professional nursing staff. Now, we in total employ 11 CSNs and 12 LPNs. All of those people are licensed nursing professionals. The LPN staff engages in every single aspect of our medical and healthcare provision in our elementary, middle, and secondary schools. They were not used in calculating a ratio of students to healthcare professionals, which was absolutely inappropriate and unacceptable as far as I'm concerned because it misleads our general public. I made this statement once before in this room about something that was done without real consideration. We now have parents wondering, are our children safe? Are our children properly cared for in their schools when it comes to their healthcare professionals? And it shouldn't have happened. It really shouldn't have happened. Our ratio, whereas I believe, and I mean, I haven't done a thorough study on this, I've done a brief study on it, we're one of the few, if not the only, school district locally who uses LPNs as well as CSNs in our medical staff. They are professionals, they are licensed, and they are capable. It's where the rubber meets the road when it comes to treating our children. And that they weren't used in defining what we do, to me, is horrible. It painted a totally unacceptable picture of what our reality is. It's not reality. And I want to ask, what has there been service denied? Has a child been denied medical help when they needed it? And if so, why hasn't that come to us? We see litigation here all the time. Ninety-nine percent of our litigation comes to us out of the special ed world. And we prepare for that and we deal with that. I'm on the board 19 months. I have yet to see a court case brought to us, or a suit brought to us, on medical services being denied children. I haven't seen anything like that. I haven't seen where we were delinquent in providing medical services to children. Now, look, we had an article last week, we have a 10.9 million possible budget deficit. If we had an infinite amount of money, I mean, we could have a clinic in every building. We don't. If you talk to our kindergarten teachers, they have 27 in all of their classes. Superintendent Mike May at Abington Heights was complaining last spring that their numbers in their kindergarten classes at Abington Heights were approaching 20, and how disturbing it was to him. It's all about money. Now, could we have more? But I really believe that we are doing an excellent job as a district with our health provisions and our nursing staff. I mean, we have a ratio nobody can contend with. And I for one want to know why that kind of thing happens. I'm hoping that at least the people watching our broadcast can queue to this because they certainly didn't get it out of the print media yesterday. And I'm not going to tell somebody how to do their job when they're writing columns, but a single source for me in the CSN staff employed by the Scranton School District, to me, is not adequate. It just isn't being done the way it should get done. I mean, that's my story and I'm sticking to it. I didn't like it, I think it was done improperly, and it was done to misguided. I'd like to ask the superintendent if we could consider an information correspondence to our families.
With some other schools.
Elementary, middle, and high school, letting them know what their hard numbers are. And when I talk about LPNs, I'm not talking about LPNs required in an IEP for a special education student. That's a number in addition to what we employ for our general student use. And we do have those. I'm not going to put Mrs. Colorosi on the spot for a number tonight, but I know because we've approved their contracts. If that could get